Oh, yeah, yeah.
We've been in the hospital. I didn't even recognize each other. It was weird.
It was out of context, but, uh, yeah.
I looked over. I looked over again.
I did give them a break. All right, we're ready to go. Okay. So, let's call the regular meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, February 25th to order. If I could ask everybody to please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
.......................................................................................... Okay. So, let's call the regular meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, February 25th to order. If I could ask everybody to please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
...................................................... All right. Good evening, everybody. Could I ask for a roll call, please?
Steven Arthur.
Here.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Alice Delly colleague.
Here.
Pat Currie.
Here.
Darren Munster.
Here.
Ellen Maurer.
Here.
Okay. So, we note Ellen Maurer is absent for the record. And given her absence, I'd like to appoint Steven Arthur as Secretary Pro Tem tonight in Ellen's absence. Our agenda this evening, we have two educational presentations. One, about a flipped classroom, which certainly has my curiosity. And the second is a fencing club demonstration. So, I see our fencing club is here tonight. Brief President's Report, reports from our student school board representatives. We'll have the Superintendent's Report. It's been a busy month. The consent vote agenda will approve. We'll have updates from program and personnel and facilities and finance. There really is no update from Property Committee. Anything from SEDOL?
No, but we are meeting next week.
Okay. And really, nothing from Illinois Association of School Board. So, relatively routine agenda. All right? Any other questions? All right. Hearing none, we'll start with our educational presentation. Start out with the flipped classroom, correct? Or...
Yes. So, tonight, Joe O'Brien from Libertyville High School and Sean Crivier from Vernon Hills High School are going to share with you a new and innovative concept called the flipped classroom. And they've been working on this, uh, this year for the first time. And I think you're going to find this very fascinating. So, I'll turn it over to you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for having us tonight. We're pretty excited about what we're doing in our classrooms this year. And we appreciate the opportunity to kind of share that with you and just show you a little bit about what we've been doing here. The flipped classroom concept comes from taking what a traditional classroom typically would look like in a content delivery standpoint happening during class time and then practicing the skills typically happening at home, otherwise known as homework. The flipped classroom concept then flips that traditional setting and revolves around a class where you have content presentation happening at home as part of the assignment outside of class or homework. And then, the skill practice taking place more in the classroom in a hands-on environment where the teachers and instructors are there to be with the students during the skill practice that's happening. So, that's kind of the general definition of it. A lot of people refer to it primarily as watching a video for homework, as that is the more popular way of delivering the content outside of the classroom, although it doesn't necessarily have to only be video delivery. There's all sorts of other ways. And in a sense, you know, in the traditional homework assignment of read these chapters, that's really content delivery. But, you know, nobody does their reading assignments. And so, this... I shouldn't say that, but I did. This is kind of a newer way of delivering content at home that's much more engaging for the students than to have them read pages 30 through 50 at home tonight before class tomorrow. So, I'll let Joe talk about, you know, the why behind our decision.
That's actually a pretty good segue. The why has a lot to do with reading the textbook. I think that reading the textbook is still very valuable and a necessary component to the class. And what I was finding was it wasn't happening as often as I would like. And so, what flipping the classroom has allowed me to do is it has allowed me to take the presentation portion of the class and have that be the homework. And we do a lot of the textbook reading, or I should say, some of the textbook reading actually in the classroom. But, the big reason why I was intrigued by flipping the classroom and experimented with it this year is it allows for you to bring in a whole slew of activities that you might not otherwise normally have time for. Just a quick example, in a history class, you may refer... In a lecture, I may reference a primary source that I think the kids would be able to relate to. But, now, in the flipped classroom, I'm able to bring that primary source in and actually look at it and work with it a little bit more frequently because it's allowed me to buy a little bit more time. And so, the why, the why we did it and the why that we started looking at doing this was to look at the amount of time that we have with our students. If we include 50 minutes during the class period and, say, 25 to 30 minutes that we get them at home, are we maximizing our use of that time? And we decided that there might be a way of approaching it where we get even more out of that 80 minutes with our kids during the day. And so, I'm going to turn it over to Sean to talk a little bit about the how.
There's a lot of components in terms of the decisions that we make to actually go ahead and flip the class. And by no means do we do this every single day. This is not happening on a daily basis. But, you know, being sprinkled in and happening as much as we have, you know, the need and time to do, you know, one of the decisions that we made going into this was we weren't going to flip the classroom just for the sake of flipping the classroom. We were going to make sure that it was relevant with what we were trying to accomplish. So, from a video standpoint and creating the lessons that would be ultimately delivered at home, we had a couple decisions to make. First of all, we need to figure out how we were going to create the video. Did we want our ugly mugs in the video? Or were we going to, you know, spare ourselves of the student ridicule and just, you know, have the content in there? And for some reason, we decided to go ahead and include our faces and a little bit of video of ourselves in there. From reading that we did and different suggestions from other teachers that are doing it to give it a little bit more of a personal feel. So, the creation is happening with a couple of tools. There's Screencast-O-Matic, which is a free online web-based tool that you can use and that we use to create the videos. And then, there's Camta... And the Screencast-O-Matic's pretty basic. It's pretty bare bones. It's free. And it's web-based. And then, Camtasia's a software that Joe's been dabbling with a little bit, does a little bit more, allows for post-filming, editing, and those sorts of things. Once we've got the video made, then, you know, we had to decide from there, where were we going to put it for the kids to access it? So, our first decision, again, in looking at all sorts of options and doing a bunch of reading, was to go with a site called sofia.org, highly supported by Bill Nye the Science Guy, which is really all you need to know there. But, sofia.org allows you to not only present a video, but it allows you to build an entire lesson. So, it gives you a space to, up at the top a little bit more, put the objective in there. It allows you to put a little note in there. Like, this one here, I just put a note to the kids that I clicked "Stop" a little too early. And it looks like it cut off too soon, but it really only cut off about two seconds before the video actually was planned to end. So, you know, I didn't want them thinking there were any technical problems when they were looking at it and going, "Oh, no, I didn't get to see the whole video," and then panicking all the way until class the next day. The video itself is embedded right in the lesson page. And you can add a bunch of other documents in there. We... I typically add the notes, the slides that I'm going to cover in the video. That allows the kids to either print them out and take extra notes on the side, which a lot of them do. Some of them have told me they've taken notes on this, just on their phone while they're watching the video. They take the notes directly on their phone on these slides. So, the nice thing about sofia.org is it's a place to not only store the video, but the entire content of the whole lesson. The downside of sofia is that at times, it can be quirky. It's free. It's getting a lot of use. It's got a lot of heavy traffic. So, another place that we've decided is a good place to make the videos at least available is just on YouTube. And that, you probably don't need me to explain YouTube to you. You can make channels and store all the videos for your channel there. It's a nice backup secondary for students who maybe their computer's being goofy with the sofia interface. And they can just jump on YouTube pretty easily from, you know, just about anywhere. So, once they're stored and located somewhere for the kids, we had to figure out how we were going to deliver that to them. You know, how we were going to make it possible for them to get to the storage location. So, what we went with was we use Twitter and we use the hashtag function. We have a unique hashtag that we create for each class. And as you can see, my accounting two class, the hashtag is VHACC2. The beautiful thing about the hashtag function, delivering it with that, is that the students don't have to have a Twitter account to get to this. They can just go into twitter.com, search. They can search that hashtag. And because our accounts are public, the tweet comes up. And it's completely available to them to go to and get their lesson and their homework for the evening. So, those are the three main stages that we had to kind of hash out from a technology standpoint was creation, storage, and then delivery of it. And that's what we've gone with. Not to say we'll stick with that for forever, but it's working pretty well for us at this point. So, I'll let Joe talk to you a little bit about what it allows us to do.
This next section, I would say, are added advantages. Things that we were able to start doing that we didn't anticipate when we were starting to just flip the classroom. And I would say that the number-one benefit that I have seen in my classroom since I've flipped it has been my ability to do formative assessment at home, so overnight. So, Sean will click on a sample Google Form. So, attached to every flipped lesson, the kids have to go in and they just have to fill out. It takes them two minutes. So, it doesn't add a ton of work to their time. However, this is what they see. But then, what we see and what the feedback that this yields to us is a spreadsheet in a Google Form that we can use to inform our instruction before we go into the next class period. And also, I think I speak for Sean, too. We use this a lot as discussion starters. So, we can put this up right at the beginning of class and look at the responses that kids have given us to questions that we asked them the night before based on the instruction that we gave them the night before. And that is a springboard to some of the conversations and activities that we have in class that following day. Sean uses some things just a little bit differently in terms of feedback.
So, one of the big differences between the curriculum that Joe and I are delivering is his is a bit more, as a history class, a bit more conducive to longer discussions. As an accounting teacher, mine is... Not that it doesn't lend itself to discussion, but mine's more problem-based. So, the difference in usage there, you know, I use it to give example problems, and then we'll talk about the example problems. We'll actually go back and watch the video in class with me in there, depending on what some of the questions are or confusion is in that. And from a selfish standpoint, it's been pretty cool because I've learned a lot about my delivery and what, you know, what's working for the kids and what's just not working for the kids that I've never realized. So, it allows me to clear that stuff up for them and talk about the lessons while we watch it again together after they've maybe already watched it once the night before. That doesn't happen every time, but it certainly does lend itself to that. And then, another big advantage from a problem curriculum approach is that it's nice to have it out there for review purposes. The test comes around. They can go back and watch how to do those problems again. Final exam comes around. They can go back to the entire... Like, YouTube has a channel. Sofia's got a channel-type feature as well. So, they can go back to the entire channel of videos, find that part that they're stumped on getting ready for finals, and just re-watch that lesson, which, you know, there's no way they'd be able to have us re-teach them that lesson at 10 o'clock at night when they're getting ready for finals. So, as far as how we use it, it's slightly different. There's a lot of similarities, but there's some differences as well.
And just to close, one thing that both of us have noticed is that our students like it, that they are responding to it. The feedback that we get from them, both in some of the feedback forums that we use on a daily basis and then just anecdotally in talking with them, they find benefits to having the access to the information this way. For me, selfishly, I like it because I get to watch them and make sure that they're reading their textbook. We are learning a lot as we continue to go on, but it's something that I think that Sean and I have both had, I would say, a lot of success with and will continue to pursue this in our classrooms and surely are willing to help other teachers in the district pursue it in their own. And we thank you for your time tonight.
Any questions from the Board? Alex?
Your prep time. It sounds like you've got an extra prep because you have to do this homework. What's your reaction to that?
I said, "We do it when we have time," is, you know, one of the things. But, yeah, it definitely takes some extra time. It's getting quicker, for me at least. You know, the more I do it, the faster I'm able to go through it and put all the pieces together.
The first videos were long. It took me a long time to create them. And most of that was simply managing the software and learning how to use that. Once I've gotten that down, I would say it's actually real-time. So, if I'm making a 12-minute video, it's taking me 12 minutes. So, it's... In the end, after you kind of... You get the foundation work down, I think it's really time manageable.
And you say you don't do it every day, anyway? So...
Yeah. I would say in a seven-lesson unit, three of them or four of them might be flipped.
Thank you.
Are a lot of teachers in your various departments or other departments, then, like, do we do this, too? Or how did you guys even know that each other were...
Well, we actually attended a technology conference last April that had nothing to do with flipping. But, as we were talking about, a lot of the different web tools available...
I'm a way back from...
We were talking about, but when do you have time to do these in the classroom? And that's when we started talking about, well, you know, I mean, the Khan Academy, you know, two years ago, and the idea of flipping has been out there for a while. But, how and why you would do it was something I think was kind of new to us. To answer your first question, in my department, there are two teachers that are flipping occasionally. I had four teachers put in for innovation grants to get the webcam and the Camtasia software to begin working on that. So, I would say that it's something that, once you have a couple of people that are doing it and talking about the success they're having with it, it does spark an interest in teachers.
I'll just highlight. So, I mean, it's nice to hear that it came out of a conference that you went to. I know sometimes we pick up the newspaper, we hear about some of these conferences, and they don't usually talk about all the good things that happen in these conferences. So, it's great to hear that that was the venue where some of this originated from because I can imagine how valuable that would be.
Yeah. Like Joe said, the conference wasn't about flipping. It presented a bunch of tools that we became comfortable with and looked at and said, "Oh, we could use this for flipping. We could use this." It's not probably as tough as it seems.
And what do you find with the students when you give them, I'll call it a conventional assignment for the evening? Is that usually met with a rather, "Aw, come on, Mr. Crivier. Don't you have another..."
Most things are met with that. I think that...
Maybe we should ask Mr. O'Brien.
No, they're, you know, they're okay with both. I think they appreciate the variety, you know? I don't know if they... I don't want to speak for them, but I don't know if they would want to go full-blown with the flip class because, you know, switching it up a little bit and keeping it fresh for them seems to...
Okay. So, in my sense is, this is, again, the tip of the iceberg, and it's just another example of technology moving to the classroom. I was thinking about this over the last couple of weeks where, you know, a lot of schools are doing iPads and all this. I was thinking, maybe in the... Oh, man, this is spring, in the fall? We might want to go back and revisit our whole technology LRP and what our plans and expectations are because this seems to be gathering some pretty significant momentum.
Yeah. Yeah. And I applaud you for doing this. I think this is an enormous concept that's going to really take hold at some point in time and change the way we do a lot of things. The question, you know, you talk about how the technology impacts us. And I see this as using the technology to expand the classroom to other places, to your home, so that you're really doing things that used to be just restricted to that classroom in your home, on your phone, on your, you know, in the bus ride to school, whatever that might be. Do you find that a lot of your students are using this on mobile devices and really reviewing that? So...
Well, I could tell you, I walked into the... One of the LSTs last week, and one of my students was sitting at a desk with his phone out. I just assumed he was listening to music. And I patted him on the shoulder and said, "Hi." And he looked at me and said, "Doing your homework." So, yeah, I think that that is the case.
Yeah. And combining that with, as you were saying, the formative assessment, that you can do it actually real-time right there, the information that you get back from this and the ability to... For the student to review or re-listen to or re-watch or reread the things they're struggling with, I just think it's a terrific idea, and I applaud you for it.
Thanks.
And I think as we continue to work through this, one of the things is our teachers and administrators work with Mick and our technology people on our technology plan. It's really emerging there are multiple tools. So, the iPad in itself, to give a group of students an iPad without any training or purpose or goals for that, you know, may not be the best use of our resources where we have multiple resources. You know, one of the focuses... One of the focus that the Foundation has landed on is to support technology in the classroom through the innovation grants. And last year, we had a record number of innovation grants that the Foundation was able to give out. And as they look long-term for a larger project or projects to support in a bigger way, that various pieces of technology is something the Foundation is interested in supporting over and above what the Board would normally contribute to that. So, that... The growth of the technology and the application of the technology in the classroom is really emerging as multiple tools. It's not just the iPad. It might be Chromebooks for some folks. And how do we best deliver the support? To go to Pat's point, how do we best deliver the support for the multiple kind of technologies that we're using in learning? And I think that's going to be not a challenge, but it's going to be exciting, I think, moving forward to identify that. But, it is also very exciting to see the Board has the ability... Has had the ability to have a number of teachers come in and demonstrate some of the ways that you're using technology. And I think I could speak for all of the adults sitting at the table, that we would love to go back to high school now, okay? And have some of the teaching that... Tools that we've seen here, including what you guys have done tonight. We might also ask our students if they'd like to comment on integrating technology and different learning tools in your classes. If you guys want to say anything, go right ahead.
Yeah. I mean, I think it would be awesome whenever you see in the classroom something different, just something different, other than textbook homework lesson. It really makes kids interested and more excited to learn. And then, when they're more excited to learn, they're more likely to learn it right and learn it better. So, I think this is great, and I think it's definitely the future of education.
And I think it really helps for convenience, too. Because a lot of us will be on the bus going to and from sports or something like that. And so, just to have your phone out and getting stuff done instead of by coming up till midnight is really convenient for a majority of the kids. It's very cool.
Yeah. And just one question on that. Do we have issues in the community, though? I mean, if everybody's got a smartphone, it's one thing. If everybody's got access to a computer, it's another. But, you know, what provisions do we have for people that may not have access to that? Or maybe it's not an issue. I don't know.
They can always come in before school or after school and use the resources here to get that work done. They know... They can come in my room, you know, during a study hall and use a Chromebook or whatever they need to use. That was one of the things that we talked about.
Yeah. I have one student this semester that doesn't have Internet access. And I have... He's actually my motivation. I have a deal with him. I will have the video done and posted by seventh period.
Yeah.
So, he can get it done while he's still at school during the day.
Okay. Good. And to answer your question, I'm not sure I would want to go back to high school.
I don't know that I could do very well. So... Okay. Great. Thanks a lot. That's great.
Thanks again, guys.
Okay.
My next presentation. The Board's aware that we've been in discussions with the athletic director and I have been working on an agreement to bring a fencing club to the district. And so, we're going to have a joint fencing between Vernon Hills and Libertyville High School. And I've been working... And I'd like to introduce Deborah Pelich and Rich Jackham. Good stand. They're going to introduce the coach and the team, and they're going to give us a little demonstration of fencing tonight. So, I'll turn it over to you.
Let me begin by thanking all of you for this great opportunity to highlight and feature some of the kids that are in our collective schools here and to really promote the sport of fencing. It's something that these kids have worked very hard at over the last four or five years in private lessons. And the opportunity to bring a fencing club or team to high school is something that we've all been aspiring to for a long time. And to see it now coming to fruition is really very exciting. Let me introduce just a couple of people who have been instrumental in helping us get this far. One is Coach Gordon Gandy. Is Gordon... Oh, there he is over there. He's shy. But, he's been the gentleman who has helped coach these kids along from the ages of sometimes eight or nine to their high schools. And he's really helped put together a cadre of some really talented fencers, and we'll talk a little bit about them. Deb, my colleague here, is another parent organizer who has a child at Hawthorne and has been very instrumental in getting a middle-school fencing program started at Hawthorne North. So, she's really been a great inspiration to me. Thank you, Deb. And then, I want to also point out Tony Perello. Tony, you can say hi. Tony is a gentleman who is nationally-rated EPE and FOIL fencer, who has offered to be the coach for the fencing team once we get it started here. So, we're very excited about having somebody of Tony's caliber to be a part of this. And then, I'd like to point out Kalina Yang. Kalina, can you stand up and just say hi to everybody? Kalina is one of the most talented high school fencers in the state of Illinois right now. She is consistently ranked in the top three in all the high school tournaments you've competed in this year. So, it's really very exciting for us to think about having a high school team next year that will have somebody like Kalina onboard. It's really a great way for us to start. So, Kalina, thank you. Let me introduce the kids. This is going to mostly be a guided presentation. I'm going to ask questions, but I thought you'd really like to hear from them and hear about their perspective. So, if you guys can kind of stand in a straight line here. I'd like to have them introduce themselves to you. And we'll start with Jesse. Jesse, would you say hello and tell people who you are and your age and how long you've been fencing?
Hello. I'm Jesse.
Hello, I'm Jesse, I've been fencing for three years, and I'm 14 years old.
I'm Brian, I'm 13, and I've been fencing for a few years.
I'm also Brian, and I've been fencing for five years, and I'm 14.
I'm Skylar, I've been fencing for just over a year, and I'm 13.
I'm Tad, I'm 17, and I've been fencing for about four years now.
So, they'll all be either freshmen, juniors, or seniors in high school next year, right? Let's, let's start off by just kind of going through some material that we prepared. What's interesting about fencing is that fencing is a, a sport that has a tradition that's something like 600 years old, and so it's really steeped in history and etiquette and tradition. And so, I thought it'd be kind of fun for you guys to learn a little bit about fencing, we'll talk about some of those histories and traditions, we'll talk about some basic footwork and some basic blade work, and then we'll put it all together at the end in a bout so that you guys can see what a fencing bout looks like. But I thought we'd ask, you know, Brian Lemay and Jesse maybe to talk a little bit about some of the tradition and history. And so, for instance, you may not know this, but fencing is largely inspired by the French tradition, that's where fencing got started, and so it's seeped with, with French vocabulary. So, do you guys want to just throw out some of the French words you've learned as a part of learning to fence? Jesse?
First, you start out, start about by saying on guard.
On guard, and what does that mean?
Um, I don't know.
All right, that's good, yeah, and Brian?
Yeah, sorry, prestofer is a move, which is kind of where you beat the blade out of the way, and that means taking the iron in English.
Jesse, can you think of another French word?
Um, simble blade.
Brian, how about you?
Um...
Repost?
Repost, yes, which means retaliation.
Parry?
Parry, yeah.
Good. Can you guys stand in the on-guard position? Jesse and Brian? On-guard position. Yeah, what asks on? So, one of the things that's very interesting about fencing is that it's, it has a lot of etiquette involved in it, and so when you begin a fencing bout, the first thing the fencers will do is they'll salute the audience, the directors, and their opponents. So, will you show everybody your salutes? And they put their masks on. They'll just do, just do, do a little spar until somebody gets a point. Okay, so let's call that a point, and then at the end of the tournament or the end of the bout, the fencers will take their masks off and they'll shake hands. And so, one of the things with, it's nice about fencing is that it teaches kids, even though it's a highly competitive sport and it's a martial art, it's very much like many of the traditional Asian martial arts, that it focuses very much on responsibility and respect and etiquette. So, thank you, guys, if you could step back, and we'll have Skylar and Brian Weiss step forward. Brian, can you explain to the board a little bit about how fencing is scored, how many points there are in different kinds of bouts?
Uh, there, yeah, there's, there's generally two main types of bouts, there's five-point bouts and 15-point bouts, and you get points by hitting your opponent in the target area.
Great, and Skylar, can you show people what the target area is and why, and why you're wearing a silver jacket?
I'm wearing silver to show the target area for saber. Saber is pretty much the torso, the arms, and the helmet, while foil is mainly just the torso, and the third weapon, epe, is pretty much everywhere.
That's right, all right, good. So, can you guys take a, a straight line here as though we're going to do a practice drill? I wanted to show the board some, some footwork. So, one of the things that's interesting about fencing is that there are two main, main things that fencers focus on, and the difficult part of it is putting it all together, like kind of walking and chewing gum. Each one is simple by itself, but putting them all together is very difficult. So, the first thing fencers learn is footwork. Can you mask up, please? All right, can you show people in advance? Advance, advance, retreat, advance, advance, plunge, retreat, retreat, boistro, plunge. All right, great. So, that shows you some very basic footwork. Now, it goes a lot faster, these guys are doing things in slow motion to sort of show you the moves. When they start the bout, you'll see how fast this starts to get. Let's also, let's do a little bit about blade work. So, if I could have Skylar and Tad, please, and you guys can sit down back there out of the area, that would be great. Can you, guys mask up? So, Tad is going to be a target, and Skylar is going to demonstrate some basic blade work, some basic attacks. So, Tad's not going to move, he's just going to make himself available to be hit. So, Skylar, can you do a direct attack? So, a direct attack is the attack that goes straight in and there's no opposition, the opponent's blade doesn't connect or anything. So, she made a direct hit, and if that was a real saber, that would have cut his head in half, but this is all a demonstration. So, now we're going to do a bead attack. Skylar, can you do a bead attack? So, a bead attack is when you make contact with the opponent's blade first and then score a touch or a point. And Skylar, now parry or post. So, in this case, Tad initiated the attack, she blocked it, and then went in and scored a point. So, the parry is the block, the repose is the point that's scored after the parry. All right, now, Tad is actually going to do what he's supposed to do, not simply stand there, he's going to defend himself. So, we're going to do it all over again, and you guys can see what, what it looks like when you do this in slow motion. So, Skylar, a direct attack. And so, Tad parried, he did a head parry, and then he went in and scored the parry or post. Skylar, let's try another one. All right, and then Skylar, third. All right, very good. So, that shows you some basic moves. Now, what we're going to do is we're going to have two of our talented fencers stand up and actually give you a bout. We thought we'd do a five-point bout to show you guys what a, a fencing match would actually look like. Five-point bouts are typically used as a part of the, what's called the elimination pools, and if you score well in the five-point bouts, then you'll rank well when you get to what's called the direct elimination rounds. So, what we do is we train kids to think strategically, because fencing is really like physical chess. You've got a certain number of points in which you can score, and the opponent is trying to score in that same number of points, and so you have to think about planning your moves ahead, you have to be able to respond in real time to whatever your opponent is doing, whatever strategy he or she is implementing. So, why don't we have Tad come up? Tad is actually going to be the director, so in a fencing bout, you have a referee or a director who watches the fencing, figures out who scored the point, applies the rules, and then awards the point. And then we're going to have Brian Lemay and Jesse do a bout for you.
I'm just saying, probably more in G.
Halt. This is the attack, point, one, zero. On guard, ready, fence. Halt. This is the attack, parry, repose, point, one, one. Halt. This is the attack, two, one. On guard, ready, fence. Halt. Nothing done but attack. On guard, ready, fence. Halt. This is the attack, three, one. On guard, ready, fence. Halt. Improper parry, four, one. On guard, ready, fence. Halt. Attack, parry, repose, point, four, two. On guard, ready, fence. Halt. This is the attack, five, two, bout.
Are there any questions? They would love to answer any questions you guys have.
Would you like to explain a little bit about the mat and maybe electronic, will you have?
Sure, so, there are two kinds of fencing. There's something called dry fencing, which is what we did for you today, but there's something called wet fencing, which is the modern version of fencing, it's electrically scored. So, Skylar, will you stand up? Skylar's wearing what's called a Lemay, it's a silver, it's a Kevlar vest that's actually wired with metallic thread, and it attaches to a wire that plugs into the back, basically. The wire also attaches to her sword and to her helmet, and when the two fencers are hooked up to an electronic scoring system, the person who makes the connection, completes the circuit, will score the point. It's governed by a computer chip because timing is essential, because you saw how fast fencing is. Literally, two people could try to score a point within microseconds of each other, and so the computer has to detect, you know, who scored the point within the allotted time. So, in a fencing tournament, what we would normally do is we would roll out strips, these are aluminum strips, and we would hook the kids up to electronic scoring equipment. And every time a point scored, you'd have lights going off and buzzers ringing to help the director figure out who scored the point.
So, the, I know you were restricted on space here, but is there a normal, like a footprint of space that you do this within, like a, a mat for wrestling or something where you have out a bout?
Yeah, so, a fencing strip is typically three, is it three yards wide, Coach?
Six foot, three inches, 42 feet long.
So, six feet wide, 42 feet long, typically. Now, we, obviously, when we're practicing, we can practice just about anywhere, but it's nice to have the, the right size so that you get used to the right proportions on the strip.
All right, very good, thanks very much.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody, good job.
One more question.
Are you anticipating that interest will grow and will beginning students be able to, I mean, it seems like these guys all have training other than this, how's that going to happen?
The thought with, is that this would be an open team without tryouts. We've found that most kids don't have any exposure to fencing when they start, and so we want this to be an open club where anybody who has an interest can come and try it out. Simply because of limitations in terms of financing, we may not be able to have all those kids compete in tournaments, but, you know, the more the kids are interested, the more the merrier. What's interesting is that at New Trier and at Stevenson, they get roughly a 2% turnout, so 2% of the entire student enrollment will show up for the fencing club to be a part of it. So, Coach Andy is actually the assistant coach at Stevenson, and you have, what, 100 kids show up?
We have a 100-man team, and that's many, many. Just, you have some really great fencers here. Kalina took first place in the Open Championship as a freshman, she beat Stevenson, New Trier, all of the main west, all of them. Jesse took third in the JV Championship. You have some really great fencers coming here, and we have programs for, for little kids, you're going to be getting great fencers for a long time, they're going to be my heartache and Stevenson, because they face Stevenson. The high school experience for fencers is, is amazing. The club is different, and I've always wanted, you know, Libertyville and Vernon Hills to, to make a team because they don't get it until you get in a high school team and you're fencing for a team. Like Stevenson is a bonded team, you know, the Stevenson High School team is, I mean, they're friends forever. They can fence forever, you can fence till you're old like me. They will, some of them will be coaches, and, you know, you can see the, the intelligence of these people, they are, you have to be smart, you have to be quick, you, you, we get guys that never play anything except video games, and they come out there, oh, I'm the fifth level Don in the Sword Masters, you know, and you go, what? Well, you're not going to be anything until you practice, this is a sport and it's fast, it's fun, and you learn things, you learn friendship, you also learn how to talk with a blade. It's, you learn somebody's personality. You know, sometimes they intentionally lose, because we take anybody in fencing, and that's what you should do, you should have an open sport, no cut. If you got a guy who will check, we can teach him how to fence. You got a guy that can't hear, we can teach him to fence. Tony's a great coach, he knows how to do all this, and you're going to have somebody that, you know, is like taking care of your kids.
I can, I can talk to fencing for hours.
How many other schools in the area have a fencing group of some?
There is, there's a conference called the Great Lakes High School Fencing Conference, and there are roughly 12.
22 schools total, but most of them don't show up to the finals, so we only have like 14 total here in the middle.
12 or 14 are active in the conference, and the nice thing is that the vast majority of them are right around here.
Cool. Good.
Thank you, and before we move on, the board will note on your agenda tonight, you'll be voting on a recommendation that we have during the program and personnel committee review, and that part of agenda to go into an agreement for a fencing club that's much like our hockey group where the fencing club will use our school's name, and that's the only requirement for the school district at this point. So, we're excited to do that for all of you, and it's always great to have as many kids involved in as many things as we possibly can, and we're certainly going to tap into another group of students here, so thanks again.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, so, moving on to the president's report, I'll just make one brief comment. Later on this evening, we will be taking action related to our budget for next year, really, this year? Next year, yeah. And we've made the decision to abate back to the taxpayers approximately $4 million, and that is the second time that we've taken this kind of action. So, I would really just like to take this opportunity to say thanks to all of our taxpayers who, without whose support, we really couldn't do the kind of things that we do here in District 128. I'd also like to use it as an opportunity to really say how seriously we take the responsibility to be good stewards of our taxpayers' money, and I think over the last several months, we've had a lot of conversations as a board, we've worked hard with the administration and staff to really look at our financial condition. We feel very good about what, where we are, and because of that, we can actually take this action, and in essence, we'll, we'll keep taxes essentially flat year over year. So, I'd like to say thanks to, again, our taxpayers and their support, to our administration, our teachers and our staff for all the hard work they do to manage our finances very carefully, and then to everyone on the board for some very fruitful discussions over the last several months, okay? Moving along, reports from our student school board representative. Ally, why don't we start with you? You've had a very busy month, I understand.
I have.
And a very successful one.
Yeah, thank you. As far as the school as a whole, we've had a really busy winter season for everybody and everything. With sports, our girls' basketball team won sectionals last week, so congratulations to them, and they're playing in the super sectional game tonight. If they win, they make it to the state finals on Friday at Illinois State, so we're hoping for the best. In that, boys' swimming and diving, the state finals were last weekend, and we had a diver take ninth in the state, congrats to him. Girls' gymnastics, the state meet was this weekend, and my teammate and I qualified down, and I ended up eighth overall in the state. And for boys' wrestling, state was also two weeks ago, and we had two wrestlers place top 10 in the state, and so we had a really successful winter sports season, and spring sports are starting today, we waste no time with sports. And that includes Orcasus, which is our dance company in the spring, they held auditions, and that's a really cool show in May. For fine arts, our winter play Romeo and Juliet wrapped up last weekend, and it was a really cool show. It was like cyberpunk themed, so a twist on a classic, and it ended up being really, really great. We have our one-act plays this weekend, which are student-directed shows, so it gives students a chance to kind of work on their theater, both as actors and directors. And then we have spring auditions for our play Almost Maine coming up next week. For music, we have so, our solo and ensemble contest this weekend on Saturday, which is for choir band and orchestra, and that's where kids can perform solos or ensembles in front of judges, get some feedback and work on their music, and, oh, there was a band concert the same Thursday as the girls' basketball game. So, everyone's doing everything, it seems like. We had turnabout a few weeks ago, and it was a lot of fun, we had a Wild West theme, and the junior class put on a fundraiser for an equestrian therapy foundation because our theme was Wild West. And the numbers were kind of low, but that's typical from homecoming to turnabout, so we'd like to see some more participation next year. We're also starting to really plan our spring and summer tours, even though it doesn't really seem like spring or summer outside, we got to get planning right away. So, the choir is taking a trip to Scotland and England over spring break, which is super cool, and some students are also traveling to China again, and there's another trip to Canada for canoeing and environmental studies there. Also, in other areas, DECA has state in two weeks, and they've had lots of success in the past, so hoping for the best for them. And a few weekends ago, there was a GLMV event, which is Green Oaks, Libertyville, Mundeline, and Vernon Hills, they raised money for scholarships for those schools. There was a music event at Viper Alley that I attended, which was really great, and we raised a lot of money for students. So, that's about it, thanks for listening.
Great, great job.
Libertyville has been equally as busy, our winter sports are wrapping up, and spring's tryouts began today. As far as fine arts go, the Cabaret Concert Choir was recently held, and they had a performance that had 17 talented soloists. AP Art displayed their creations in an art show with a theme of juxtaposition, and the winter play Eurydice was a success, and auditions for their winter play, for the spring play, excuse me, start tomorrow. Excuse me. Again, for turnabout, our theme was Survivor Island. On Friday, students enjoyed our traditional pep assembly, and it's always a great tradition for the SLUC16 to walk out with these hilarious dances, and they put on quite the 32nd show for the school. The audience enjoyed a show by a professional mind reader that, I can think it's safe to say, blew everyone's minds as he got clearly, I don't know, somehow read both of the students' minds, and it was not rigged, I promise. And turnabout king Eric Boynton was crowned. And then Saturday night, students enjoyed the turnabout. king Eric Boynton was crowned. And then Saturday night, students enjoyed the turnabout dance with actually a record attendance of over a thousand students, which was great news for us in student council, because it can be hard to have that same attendance at homecoming and turnabout, but somehow we're doing it, and we were really happy with that number. And even though the fire alarm went off mid-dance, I guess on the pop plus side, this break gave everyone a nice chance to cool off outside, because it gets very, very hot on the dance floor. And many I've heard have said that this is the best high school dance they've been to. And while it's been a busy winter, it's likely going to be an even more eventful spring with more sports, musicals, performances, AP tests, and hopefully some warm weather. And Nishad Kanabulis today, he's coming back from an interview at U of I, so he gave me some of his notes about the science bowl team had the regional competition the first Saturday of this month. They took home a third-place award, but unfortunately just missed qualifying for nationals. The academic challenge team met at CLC a few weekends ago for its regional event. They won first place at the site and qualified for the sectional round to be held in a few weeks at Vernon Hills. And last but not least, LHS won first place at the math team regional competition the day before yesterday, securing them a spot at state, which will be held in May at U of I. And that's all from LHS.
All right, very good. Great job. Thank you.
Erin, I don't know if you heard from Nishad, but he was awarded the Peter Fisher Scholarship, which is a full ride anywhere he wants to go.
Wow.
Oh.
Oh, wow.
Yes, we will have to have him report on that the next time. That's really exciting.
Tell me about that. That's great.
I just learned from the staff.
That's really great. Erin, I just have one question for you at the assembly. So you didn't get Dr. Scott out there to get her mind read and really find out what she's thinking?
Yeah, we should have. We were running low on time, but he actually will be at prom, so.
He's really.
So we have another chance.
He's amazing.
And Ally, I don't know if you noticed, but Dr. Swick was actually originally scheduled to ride a horse out.
I heard about that.
At the assembly, but unfortunately, the trainer for the horse was ill and was not able to come. So we, we, I'm not sure if Dr. Swick was really disappointed by that or, you know, which way, but that would have been very interesting to see Dr. Swick on, right into your Wild West assembly. So as always, just great reports. Excellent job. Well, the first thing on the superintendent's report, is it okay?
Yep, absolutely.
I'm sorry, Pat. I kind of stole your thunder there. Superintendent's report, the first item on the agenda tonight is the appointment of John Gilliam as a VHHS principal effective July 1st, 2014. VHHS principal Dr. Ellen Swick will retire at the end of the 2013-14 school year, bringing her stellar career as an educator to an end. Her commitment, dedication, and leadership at VHHS have successfully built upon the Cougar legacy of excellence in academics, the fine arts, activities, and athletics. Under Ellen's leadership, VHHS has earned recognition as United States Department of Education Blue Ribbon School, as one of the top two percent of all United States high schools, and as one of the top one percent of all Illinois high schools. Just as importantly, she has further developed a unique sense of VHHS family that is passionate about ensuring student growth, increasing student achievement, and caring for students and staff. When her time to retire arrives next year, Ellen will certainly be missed by the VHHS and the D-128 families. To provide a coherent, meaningful, and stable transition from Ellen to the next VHHS principal, we recently initiated an early VHHS principal search, interview, and hiring process. Since we strongly believe that we had highly qualified internal candidates for the VHHS principal position, we searched internally first with the option to search externally if the internal process did not yield an outstanding future leader for VHHS. Our expectations for the next VHHS principal are high and include: to develop a collaborative vision, plan, and measurements with stakeholders to ensure continued student growth and increase student achievement, and to provide a safe and positive school climate for teaching and learning; to utilize effective leadership and efficient management models to develop and engage stakeholders in school, in the school improvement process; and to engage broader parent and community participation to achieve the school vision, mission, and goals. In short, to build upon the previous leadership of founding principal Jim Winnington and current principal Ellen Swick to lead VHHS to the next level. To that end, the D-128 administration and a representative stakeholder interview team, including district and building administrators, teachers, support staff, students, and parents, provided me with overwhelmingly and unanimously positive feedback regarding current VHHS associate principal John Gilliam. As such, after completing all phases of the screening, interview, and hiring process, I am very, very excited to recommend John Gilliam to the board as the next principal at Vernon Hills High School. John will officially begin his new duties on July 1st, 2014. Ellen Swick and John Gilliam are right where they always are on a night like tonight. They're with other VHHS students, parents, and staff, supporting VHHS students as the Cougar Girls' Basketball Team plays in the IHSA super sectional championship game. So we will celebrate John's appointment at, as the next VHHS principal with an introduction and reception at the March Board meeting. So at this time, it is my great pleasure to recommend to the board the hiring of John Gilliam as the next principal at Vernon Hills High School.
And we need a motion. So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Branser?
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Gilliam.
And I just hit send to let John know that he has officially become the next VHHS principal at the basketball game, so.
One just to set the score up there.
Yeah, they were winning six to five at the end of the first quarter. Dr. Swick is emailing me after every quarter. So congratulations to John, and we'll have more to say about John and his career at our reception when he's here, and get a chance to celebrate with him. He is very, very excited, and we're all excited to be working with him. Okay, now on to good news. As the students have highlighted, we have a lot of good news this month. What a great problem to have. District 128 Special Olympians received the following awards in snowshoeing at the recent Special Olympic State Winter Games. Mallory Marvin was bronze in the two-hundred meeting, two-hundred meter. Michelle Shepley was bronze in the two-hundred meter. David Leonard was gold in the four-by-one-hundred relay, silver in the one-hundred meter, and fifth in the two-hundred meter. Vinnie Lacosi received a gold in the four-by-one-hundred relay, a silver in the hundred meter, and a fourth in the two-hundred meter. Adrian Soto received a gold in the hundred meter, in the two-hundred meter, and the four-by-one-hundred relay. And Trevor Furman received a gold medal in the four-by-one-hundred relay. Congratulations to our Special Olympians and Coach Andy Compton, who continue to do amazing work together. VHHS seniors Kurt Wickbolt and Ally Tron were recently named recipients of the 2013 SAR and DAR Good Citizen Awards. So Ally, congratulations to both you and Kurt. VHHS volleyball coach Chris Curry has received the 2012 Coach of the Year Award at the state level in boys' volleyball from the National Federation of State High School Associations. The award recognizes his outstanding service and unselfish devotion to interscholastic activities. The IHSA nominated Curry for the award based upon his positive work with athletes in the Vernon Hills High School program. The LHS math team won the ICTM Regional Competition at Stevenson High School, as I mentioned earlier, on February 23rd, and is now qualified for the state competition at the University of Illinois on May 4th. VHHS senior Matthew Tabritzy and junior Justin Song have earned perfect scores of thirty-six on the ACT test, and each has accomplished this impressive feat not once, but twice. Second thirty-six.
It's pretty impressive, Pat.
I think you're right. I don't want to go back to high school even right now. LHS seniors Emily Deluga and Camille McAlati received honorable mentions in the 2013 Scholastic Art and Writing Awards Program for the Midwest writing region at large. The competition included student entries from the states of Illinois, Kansas, Michigan, Missouri, North Dakota, Ohio, South Dakota, and the great state of Wisconsin. Emily was honored for her short story Death's Song, while Camille was honored for her short story Under the Mexican Sun. VHHS senior Ally Tron has been named a member of the 2012-13 IHSA All-State Academic Team. She is the fourth VHHS student to receive the IHSA's top academic honor in the school's twelve-year history. Every IHSA member school may nominate one boy and one girl for the honor. Nominees must have at least a 3.5 GPA on a 4.0 scale, must have participated in two IHSA sports or activities during the last two years, and must demonstrate outstanding citizenship. Ally has been a member of the VHHS gymnastics team for three years and a member of the track and field team for four years. She has qualified to compete at the state level for multiple years in both sports. In addition to her athletic activities, Ally has also served on student council for four years, is a three-year member of both the choir and the Backlight Theater Company, participated three years in the North Suburban Conference Leadership Conference, and was a member of the VHHS Voices and Prevention VIP group for two years. As a junior, Ally participated in a French foreign exchange program. This year, she represents VHHS students as a school's student representative on the District 128 Board of Education. Ally has received numerous honors for achievements, including being named recipient of the 2013 Daughters of the American Revolution Good Citizen Award, and being named a 2013 Illinois State Scholar and 2012 Advanced Placement Scholar. She was named to the Daily Herald Lake County Athlete, she was named Daily Herald Lake County Athlete of the Year in 2013, and was chosen for the Daily Herald Leadership Team in 2012-13. Ally and her fellow honorees will be recognized by the IHSA at a banquet later this spring. I think that deserves a pause and a round.
Great job, Ally. Congratulations. LHS students Joey Nedlin, Timothy Lee, Alex Wang, Unkor
Rustogi, Ken Wu, and Alex Zhang qualified for the American Invitational Mathematics Exam to be held on Pi Day, which is my March 14th, by the way, by placing in the top 2.5 percent in the nation in the American Mathematics Competition, which was held at LHS on February 5th. Members of the VHHS Junior State Club of America, along with advisor Eileen Orzoff Baronic, recently participated in the JSA Conference in Washington, DC. Senior Steeman Tenetti served as the convention bill director for seven hundred students and over seventy bills. Shubham Patel received two Best Speaker Awards, and Nareen Akarudi announced his run for Senator representing Illinois for the Midwest chapter of JSA, which is Illinois, Indiana, Michigan, and Wisconsin. The election will be held at the Spring Conference in Oak Brook. The LHS FBLA team participated in its area competition on January 26th. Congratulations to the following members on their achievements. Elizabeth Wu and Mary Kate Smith placed seventh in business ethics. Sahaj Patel finished fourth in computer applications. Alec Kradkowski, Sam Gold, and Grant Dean finished in first place in entrepreneurship. Anne Mulshaw finished first place in business financial planning. Caitlin Fahey and Maddie Glenn finished fourth place in marketing. Aruj Ahmad finished second place in e-business. Brent Chow finished second place in business math. Cam Hayes was second in computer applications. Kathleen Morris was first in job interview, and Rahul Kennachali finished sixth place in emerging business issues, and Cassie Ostmeyer and Carly Ostmeyer finished eighth place in marketing. And finally, the VHHS wise team took first place at regional competition held at the College of Lake County on February 9th. The team scored 499.3 points out of possible 500 overall. In addition to the team's score, the following individuals took home medals for placing first, second, or third. Justin Yim, Matt Tabritzy, Kelvin Wang, Joe Hi, Eric Zhang, Alex Ravinsky, Michaela Kunwaran, Alex Wang, Victoria Steinerwald, Catherine Bullos, John Hoffman, Emily Mong, and Justin Song. And that ends the really impressive good news report for the evening. The board will note under number three that we had one, had one donation acknowledgement tonight, and we'd like to acknowledge Mr. Yu Pan, and Mr. Pan donated $300 to the Libertyville High School Math Team to support their efforts, so we're very appreciative of that. And we have two FOIA requests in the board packet this evening, as the board will note. And under other, we have a very large crowd here tonight downstairs in the main auditorium. As we have often done in District 128, we are hosting a legislative forum this evening, which is sponsored by 59th District State Representative Carol Senti on head trauma and head injuries in football. There are a number of experts here tonight. There are two well-known Chicago neurologists. Marty Hickman, the executive director of the IHSA, is here this evening, and a number of coaches and athletic directors. And so when we conclude the board meeting tonight, if you're interested, you could certainly go to the auditorium for that conversation. And Pat, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Very good. Quite extensive. All right, anybody from the public who would like to speak? Yeah, Ally.
Ally?
I don't know if I count as public, but I just need to say that Aaron also got the DAR Award. I actually saw her at the ceremony.
Oh, my gosh.
So I should.
Thank you for that correction. Erin, congratulations. Sorry we missed that.
No, it's okay.
Okay, the consent vote agenda is listed, was reviewed earlier in the month in committee. If I could ask for a motion, please, to approve the consent vote agenda.
Move to approve consent vote agenda?
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Branser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Next program and personnel committee, member Lundstedt.
Okay, first item is to approve the 2013-14 Revised School Calendar.
Ally, any comment on that? Any comment on that?
This is the calendar as announced, and we're still doing some work on some state mandated testing that we will add to the calendar, and we'll bring that back to you once we determine what the state wants us to do with that. So we will be bringing that back, but we'd like to get this approved now so we can get it out to the public.
So may I have the motion?
So moved? Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Branser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, the next item are the eighteen educational tour requests listed on your agenda, and we have a motion to approve those.
Move that we accept the eighteen educational tour requests as presented?
Okay.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Branser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye. Aye. All right, motion carries.
Okay, then the next item is approval of the fencing club. As we saw the wonderful presentation earlier, the agreement with, have a fencing club named for the district.
Right, correct.
Yes.
I move that we approve the new agreement for the fencing club. Second. Any discussion?
What's our liability with?
You weren't helping.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Just wondering if we put our name on it.
Well, any, what, anything, as, as the attorneys will always say, counselor, if it walks like a duck, it quacks like a duck, and it, it probably is a duck. So because we have our name on this, we would be, you know, party to some liability in the event of a lawsuit, as we would with any activity that we have. But like the hockey club, their fencing governing body has, you know, liability insurance, and then our coverage would be secondary coverage on that.
In addition.
It's no different than what we're doing with hockey and lacrosse and some of the other clubs.
And in addition, you know, schools and activities like that are, you know, they're, they're obviously potentially dangerous, and so you have that recognition, but schools have a greater protection than a private club, for example, if somebody does get hurt. So in, so you have that, you have the insurance, double way of insurance, and, you know, everything has risk, but school districts are generally well protected from that.
All right. Answer your question.
Yes.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Second item, the open space tax review update. So Lydia, as you were going to jump in there.
I'm going to make a comment on that. Sure. Over the past few months, we reviewed the properties that are within School District 128's boundary to see whether or not they qualify for an open space classification. And we provide you with, we provided you with a report that stated the properties that were classified as open space. And for the Libertyville Township, currently we're waiting for the report for Vernon Township to come through before we take any action on it.
Okay. All right, so it's pretty much stay tuned, right? Okay.
And that did not need a vote. Moving on, tax extension discussion, which includes the abatement that President Rudy spoke of earlier. So we're looking for a motion to approve an abatement for $4 million.
Correct, that's correct. So I'll make a motion, we approve an abatement of $4 million in the bond interest fund for the year 2013.
Second.
Basically correct. Right, discussion, any discussion? Okay, Alex, do you want to point out the minority opinion here?
As, as last year, I, I just feel until we know what the state is doing with their debt solution, that I'm not in, not in agreement with this, but I, I will work with the whole board and we will work through everything, so.
Okay. All right, anything else? All right, roll call, please.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delly Polly?
Nay.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Branser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Branser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Branser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
And that concludes program and personnel.
Thank you very much. Facilities and Finance Committee Chairman Arthur.
We have several items this evening. We will start with looking for a motion to extend the transportation contract with Lakeside Transportation for an additional two years. Need a motion to do so.
So moved?
Second. Discussion? I might highlight that very modest increases in that contract.
Lakeside transportation, which for this year would be 1.7%.
Yeah, okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Branser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Branser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Delly Polly?
Nay.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Branser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye. Okay. Yeah, I think we should also point out for the record that Member Maurer was not able to be here through a conflict with her own school district this evening, and she would have voted nay for essentially the same reasons as Board Member Delly Polly had mentioned this evening. So even though the vote won't count, we want to note her comments in the discussion as part of the very in-depth discussion that we've had over the last several months about this.
Okay, good.
Next item is the contract for auditing service, so we need a motion to accept the three-year contract for auditing services from Miller Cooper and Company.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Branser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is the resolution to prepare the tentative budget for the fiscal year 2014. So that is a motion to approve of the resolution for the administration to prepare that budget.
So moved?
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Branser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And a, finally, a bid recommendation. We have, we will need a motion to accept the bid from GE Riddford Company of Arlington Heights, Illinois, in the amount of $474,700 for the LHS roof removal and replacement on roof areas 1B, 1C, and 1E. A motion in that.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Branser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Motion carries.